Fledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. I hope everybody had a good holiday over the weekend, long weekend, thanks to the lovely weather that we had. First, I just consider a motion to approve our agenda today.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes. Move on and ask for a motion to approve our consent agenda.
So moved. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes. Then regular business. Got a payment plan on taxes owed. Do you know anything about that, Sherri? What it is?
Bill went down to get her.
Okay. We move on to number two. Steve.
Morning.
Good morning, Sherri.
Morning.
This is just a request for the chair's signature and the auditor and myself to sign the amendment to the Minnehaha County jail contract. The price change for effective January 1st, 2023 will be $106.15 per day per inmate.
And that was the same number we had discussed earlier in the year, wasn't it?
Correct.
Anybody have any questions for our chair?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I remind you that it would be public comment, but when does this contract officially end?
It took effect on, I actually just saw that, September 26, 2017. So that'd be September, actually, it took full effect September 3, 2019. So we're in year three. We have two years left. September 3, 2024, if I do my math right.
Anybody else have questions? All right. Anybody from the public want to come up and speak on this agenda item? All right. If not, I'd ask for a motion.
So moved, Madam Chair, to approve the amendment.
Second.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just urge us to get started on figuring out what the next contract will be to make sure that when this is terminated or ends, that we know what our next action will be because alternatives on the last second, last day does not work for that type of department. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any further discussion? Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes. All right. Circle back to Debbie. Hi. Good morning. Come on up.
Good morning, Debbie Block, Treasurer. I'm here to ask approval for a payment plan for a homeowner in Sioux Falls at Auburn Hills Edition Track Six condo, C104 building, Heartlands Fields. They'd like to make $100 payments. They're just behind on their second half of the 21 payable, 22. And they would also like to apply part of their income tax return when they get that. So there should be no problem on getting it caught up.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody have any questions for our treasurer? All right. If not, for the request, is there a motion?
Can we have public input, please?
Oh. Is there anybody who wish to come from the public who'd like to come up and speak on this item? All right. Hearing none, seeing none. Now, is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next agenda item. Wendy, can you come up?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just going to give you a, provide you with our 2022 update for the Lincoln County 4-H program. Here's our general information. We had eight clubs, one in Beersford, two in Canton, one in Harrisburg, three in Lenox, and one in T. Our total enrollment was 264 with 47 volunteers. We're in the process of re-enrolling right now, and we are on track to be about the same, at least. We will see when we get our final numbers in. Our youth in action events were held over the summer. The communications project is where 4-Hers give a, prepare a presentation and give that in front of two judges. Our special foods contest is they prepare a main dish that they do in front of a judge, answer nutrition questions, and do prepare a place setting. And our fashion review is where they either purchase or make a garment and then model it in front of judges and answer questions from them. Our numbers were similar to last year. Special foods was lower. That ended up being a hard date for some of our usual people this time, so we will continue to look to see if that is, if we could pick a better date. And I will note that we had 4-Hers from, one from Minnehaha and one from Union County that did our special foods contest. That's not included in these numbers, as well as two Minnehaha 4-Hers that did fashion review. That's not in these numbers. As you can see in this middle picture, we hosted a livestock judging contest in the new show ring building this year. We had 55 youth participate from 12 counties and two states. We also hosted, in the top-left picture, a consumer decision-making and horticulture skillathon that also had people from Turner, Minnehaha, Clay, and Lincoln County participate in that as well. At the state livestock judging contest that was held in September, our senior team was fourth overall, and our juniors were also fours. Our county livestock exhibits compared to 2021, numbers in dairy cattle, meat goats, sheep, and horse were up. You'll note on the poultry numbers, they were about half because we capped those entries because we didn't have a animal housing barn to keep those in. So we just used the show ring building to put them in for the day of the show. Our dog project last year was the first year that Lincoln and Minnehaha Counties started a special interest dog club together. They met one to two times a month throughout the school year, and then every Thursday night in the summer. Practices were held at the 4-H building and in the show ring building, and we used the two coaches from Minnehaha County. In 2021, we had three participants. This year, we had eight from our county and four from Minnehaha. So we have been able to grow that program by having it, hosting it in our county. We had 18 participants compete at regional rodeos around the state for rodeo. You'll note that we have a few 4-Hers from Iowa that come over and do rodeo here because Iowa 4-H does not offer a 4-H rodeo program. Our static exhibits were up this year significantly. We saw our static exhibits at the county level increase by more than 150 exhibits over last year. While it's not to pre-COVID levels, that is a significant, significant jump from last year. We also saw a large increase in the number of exhibits taken to the state fair this year with 213. The bottom two photos in this is our booth space at the state fair. I think our booth was probably the fullest one there. We had to, we spilled out into the aisle there. We didn't have room for a banner like most other counties. We barely had room for the eight-and-a-half-by-eleven sign to let them know that this is our county. Our total livestock exhibits at the state fair was 115 exhibits. Members were limited to four entries in most species due to space, except beef. They only had room for three. State fair is going through some changes with their decks building that they're putting up, so hopefully this year it'll be ready and exhibits will be up some more. We had a number of 4-Hers that did an excellent job at the state fair with showmanship across all species and placing high with their animals. Here's just a listing of everyone that placed either in the top five or were champions and things like that in the different species. We had three members placed in the top five for their respective aid division and fashion review at the state fair. Our senior horticulture and consumer decision-making teams won their contest. Megan Krieger will get to travel to Denver next week to compete at the National Consumer Decision-Making Contest, so that's pretty exciting for our county.
Wendy?
Yes?
What does that entail when they go to Denver?
The consumer decision-making contest?
Yeah.
They have to do a team problem where they work as a team to give a presentation to some judges. They have to place two classes of either food, clothing, or something in the child development area. And then they have to identify 25 items in food and cooking, housing and interior design, and sewing and clothing, 25 in each of those categories. So they have to kind of know what a lot of things are before they go, so. And I get to coach that team at the, for the national contest, so I'll be going to Denver next week with that team, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Shooting sports will start up again in January. They have, we had 59 members enrolled in 2022, and 28 of those competed at the state shoot in April. We are continuing our enrollment now, but that is another project area that has seen an increase in members. Our junior leaders, we started last year. During that time, they completed community service projects with the East River Foster Parent Network and made blankets for the Avera Maternal Funeral Medicine. This is for 4-Hers that are 14 to 18 years old. They helped with some games and achievement days. They also networked with 4-Hers from Minnehaha County and Cottonwood County, Minnesota. Tomorrow, we will go to the foster closet in Sioux Falls for a community service project and then do some fun with, at Thunder Road after that. So just as a comparison, last year, when we were relaunching the junior leaders, we had five people attend our first meeting. This year, we had 10 at our first meeting, so I thought that was a good increase to.
Do they have to qualify?
For junior leaders?
Yeah.
No, they do not. They just have to be 14 to 18 years old, so. Yep. So with that group, we try to do community service projects and then do some fellowship things and try to do some things for the county program.
Sure. Go ahead.
We held our recognition event in November at the grounds. We had, it was an excellent turnout for our event. We had to set up, I think, pretty much all of our eight-foot tables to have everybody there. This is just our award winners from this 4-H year. Outside of some of the traditional 4-H programs, we held workshops this year. We hosted an artificial insemination clinic in March, and we were over full with 33 participants when we were, had 30 as our cutoff. We held a jam and bread making workshop in Harrisburg thanks to grant funding from the Lenox and T community funds. And we held a photography workshop in July, which we had a handful of participants, but we did receive some excellent feedback, like this mom from Union County wanted to share a thank you for the workshop that was held this past summer. My daughter won best of show for her county and now won the 4-H category for the South Dakota Farmers Union Contest, again, thanks to the staff who shared their time and talents. So that was a good feedback from some other people that were in the, that came to the workshop. Some other opportunities our 4-Hers had. We had two 4-Hers attend the Citizenship Washington Focus trip after being unable to hold the conference since 2019. And this year, we've had four applicants apply for the 2023 trip, which will be held in June. We held two open houses for 4-H this fall. We had at least 23 families come and check those out. We held one in Lenox and one in Canton in October. We had two new opportunities at achievement days this year for 4-H youth. Our cupcake wars contest was full. Everyone had a great time. And our amazing 4-H race was hot, but we still had fun doing that, too. We held two nights of winter project events. That was just at the very beginning of December. Went 18 participants, and they made a reindeer wreath. That was taught by a 4-Her and a Christmas tree. And I taught a photography instruction class at Lenox High School for their journalism class this fall.
Do these kids actually go to Washington? What do they do there then?
So they, they used to stay at the 4-H Center in Chevy Chase, Maryland, but that has since been sold, so now they go to a hotel in Washington, DC for their conference. They get to network with, I think they had five other states were there at the same time that South Dakota was there, so they got to meet some other people. And then they break them into kind of groups, and they talk about some things that they can do for their communities when they come home. They get to, of course, sightsee, and then they meet the congressman out there as well from our state, so.
Great experience.
Mm-hmm. These are, the two that went this year were graduating seniors. They were actually the two people that were supposed to go in 2020. And so then, we made everybody reapply again, so it was, it's not fair, but it's fair. So, but they ended up being the people that got to go this last year. Okay, at the state level, I just wanted to give you guys what I'm doing with the state level. I'm co-chair for the poultry committee and the CDM committee and a member of our state workforce outcome team. And our team won a state award for our career conversations project that we've worked on. I traveled to Madison, Wisconsin in October for the National 4-H Professionals Conference. We had good group go from our state, and we got to meet people from all over the country and learn some new interesting program opportunities. This is just an update about the Lincoln County Fairgrounds Foundation. Our, the members are the same, except Brady Duxbury went off because he moved to Westington Springs. We had our third annual Raise the Riff fundraiser in March. We had our third vendor and craft fair in November. We had our first annual tractor pole over the Fourth of July weekend. These two people in the pictures are both 4-H members that did the tractor pole. As far as the grounds, the foundation spent $176,760 to build the show ring building, plus additional volunteer labor to haul in the dirt and level out the floor in that building, and $15,000 to build a horse arena. Both of them were usable for achievement days and the horse show. So the foundation is continuing to raise money, and they will meet again tonight, so. Here's just our grounds usage for 2022. We saw an increase in how often the buildings were being used this year. We've been getting inquiries into using the horse arena parking lot and show ring building, and we learned a lot about renting those buildings out this year, I guess. Like, we should not have glitter probably allowed in those buildings, so. I don't know if you have any questions on these things, but that's just what we had for our building usage.
That looks like a full agenda as far as people that have utilized that facility.
So far for '23, I know we have two graduation receptions that are planned, a rabbit show, the fundraiser. Those are the things that I can say off the top of my head right now, but. And then just, these are just some 4-H things that SESU sends to us, so. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Wendy? All right. Any public input on this agenda item?
Thank you.
Great report.
All right. Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you.
Move on to item four on our agenda. Morning, Terry.
Good morning. Should have in your share file, the updated agreement for T. Went back and added some verbiage to hopefully clarify the segments on here. And I also attached a map at the end of it, listing out one, two, and three, segments one, two, and three. So what we're looking for is, looking for your approval on this, to execute this, to send to the city of T. I know it was posted at the last meeting's agenda item, and I have not heard any feedback from anybody from the city of T. I'm assuming they would have seen it. So if you have any other questions or comments or other clarifications or redos we need to do on this, please let me know, and then we'll try to get this through again.
Anybody have any questions for Terry? Thanks, Terry. Any public input on this agenda item? All right. If not, I'd consider a motion.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
That's a motion to approve?
Yes, ma'am.
Same, Commissioner Aaron's? Thank you. Any further discussion? All right. If not, Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Motion carries.
Next item I have for you, again, this is awarding rural access infrastructure funds, grant applications, awarding funds for that. The review committee met here a couple weeks ago, went through the applications. We had 15 applications, I believe, split up between eight townships. Again, those are the eight townships that submitted five-year plans, so they're the only ones that are eligible. I have attached each one of the township's applications to this, to the packet here, so hopefully you've had a chance to read through that. And again, so we have what we're going to be awarding. We're going to be awarding 12 grants. And these are the ones listed up on the screen here. Most of these are for preliminary engineering. Grant amounts, we're capping the grant for each one of them at $16,000, with the exception of two down there, about three down there's for $9,600. Those are from Dayton Township, two structures for Dayton Township. They've already been talking with engineers on theirs. That's why they have $9,600 for theirs. The one, the other lone one in there is the structure, what's it, 4215911984. That is for $22,000. It's a cap grant, and that is a replacement grant. They have a current, they have a five-foot pipe in there, and they're just replacing the pipe. So these are the ones that we are recommending for award. The three that did not get awarded, we had a couple of them that were several years out for engineering, and we just felt that, as a committee, we felt that we wanted to keep stuff for '23 year, and then in '24, because in '24, a lot of these were going to get build grants, applications for in '24, for construction in '24. We did have one of them that we did, we did deny from a township. It had submitted two grant applications, and both of those structures were listed in fair condition. And the committee overwhelmingly said that, you know, not to say no to both, so we ended up granting them just one of those structures, and we denied the other. So any questions on this? Like I said, hopefully you guys have read through all the applications because the, the final decision comes down to you guys to award these structures. And again, these are just recommended. If you guys want anything changed, feel free. But again, these are the recommendations from the review committee, so.
Anybody have any questions for Terry? If not, is there any public input on this item? All right. Hearing none, seeing nobody. That wants to address it. Is there a motion?
Also moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
And your motion is to grant the awards and denials consistent with what's presented here today?
Correct.
All right. Any further discussion? All right.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Terry. Next item on our agenda is item six. Good morning.
Good morning. So T in Lenox is doing a minor boundary change. So what the commissioner needs, commission needs to do is to establish the date. I'm establishing the date as December 31, 2022, so I would just need a motion for you to establish that date.
All right. For the request, any questions? If not, is there a motion?
Is there public input on this?
Oh, there should be, sure. Any public input on this agenda item? All right. Is there a motion?
So moved, Madam Chair, to approve the date to be set.
Second.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second. And that makes that date, you said, December 31, Sherri?
Yes.
All right. Any discussion? If not, Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Next item?
So I need the board to approve the following contingency transfers: to the auditor's office for $1,000, GIS for $100, coroner, coroner for $401.59. It's just to cover the shortfalls in their budget. I have the account numbers listed that I'd be transferring the funds to. Out of the $230,000 contingency, we are asking for $1,501.59.
All right. Anybody have any questions for Sherri? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this agenda item? All right. If not, I'd consider a motion.
Move for approval, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yeah.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Next item. Good morning.
Good morning. This is concerning a lease of the fairgrounds for a company to be able to go out and use our parking lot to train their drivers for commercial CDLs. This would be between April and November. They're offering $600 during that period of time for the lease in order to, like I said, come out, use the parking lot at random intervals. It is written into the contract that it can't interfere with any of the 4-H activities that take place. He understands he needs to talk to Wendy about utilization of the facility.
How about liability, insurance, just carrying?
Our contracts typically, they have boilerplate in them that requires them to carry insurance. Since it's a motor vehicle, they would, should be carrying motor vehicle insurance as well at the time.
Anybody have any questions for Bill?
Is this going to be continually or once a month, or what?
It would be from April to November, and it would be at random times when they bring drivers out to train in the parking lot to back up and do, I believe they're going to use the.
What type of activities do they do?
We have the.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity. My name is Bali. I'm living in C-Force. I just.
Can you pull that microphone up so we can hear you better?
Okay. My name is Bali. I'm living in C-Force. My, our plan is just to use the parking lot because we saw the vacance, and I talked with local people, I mean, local administrators. They told me that is a great idea because there is a times nobody use it. So just as he told you, we want to have some agreement and to use it. We have liability for $2 million insurance for any damage. I have the document if you need. I already said document is 10, Lincoln County. Yeah, we're going to use just four hours a day, maybe two, three times in a week, especially when nobody is there. If there is a public event, we have, we will not be there.
All right. Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Madam Chair, forgive me for what I see on my share file. I'm not exactly sure how this is working. It's pretty vague. I would have liked to have seen more detail as to dates that they're going to, because we.
Just we go there to make a parking driving practice, just straight back up, forward, kind of, just.
Do you provide the vehicles for them to?
Yeah, we have the vehicles.
You have the vehicles?
It is insured, and we have liability for that, any damage. I have some paper for you guys. Just.
And this is for what length of period of time?
Yeah.
Wendy, can you just come up for a second? Do you know, I mean, how's, how are these things going to get scheduled? And I guess to answer that question, or is there some kind of calendar that's been already put forth?
I have just given the calendar for what we have scheduled so far from January through March, because I didn't know the exact dates yet. To me, the concerning time, I guess, would be during our achievement days. To me, the concerning time, I guess, would be during our achievement days. Those, probably those, the end of July, first week of August would be, I would say probably wouldn't be happening then. But we're flexible for when they would want to come and do it. So he's, you've talked with John Hanson at the building so far. I haven't been there when you have come, but I'm fine with them just letting us know when they want to come and just communicating with them is fine with me. So I don't know.
Does the contract say who has the final decision as to if they can or cannot come on certain dates? Is that up to Wendy? Is it up to John Hanson? But someone has to have make that decision. Wendy's the one making that decision. And is it for the whole fairgrounds or is it a certain part of the area? North of the building, south of the building?
North of the building, it's my understanding.
North of the building.
Yeah.
All right. Anybody else have any questions?
May I show you the liability for you guys?
It's a certificate for liability insurance.
No, that's fine, sir. You'll have to provide all of that.
Yeah.
You don't need to give us copies here today. Thank you.
Wendy, you don't have a problem with this, do you? Okay. All right.
All right. Can I get a motion?
Madam Chair, just one question.
Go ahead.
Is there anything in it that if we find that it's, is excessively in conflict or isn't working? Just if the length of period of time, is there an out or a termination that between both parties that, that this could get terminated?
Now, without mutual agreement, it's our standard contract for out there that we use for different events. We just went ahead and set the timeframe from April to November. And the other qualification is that just can't conflict with anything in 4H. So those are, that's what it is.
Is there like a 30 day or 60 day notice clause?
Because this, when we typically use for events are usually two or three days.
Exactly. So this is just a very long period of time.
We we could certainly go back and negotiate some term of release and then just bring it back to the board if you'd like us to do that.
And could we do this? Because there's no actual lease in the
document.
Attached to the, attached to the in the file.
Yeah, I don't have one in the share drive.
And maybe, I mean, look, we need more CDL drivers. This area needs more people who are licensed. I'm generally supportive. Let's just nail down the details and maybe come back next week with with the written word.
And then, yeah, that should include some termination.
I will send it to you.
Okay.
Bill?
All right. So.
Bill, approximately, how much revenue do we generate from this?
$600 for the.
For $600 for the what?
From April to November.
I'm going to ask if there's any public input on this item and if not, I'm going to ask for a motion to table. All right. Hearing none, seeing none. Can I get a motion to table this agenda item?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yeah.
Commissioner. Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
All right. Move on to our opportunity for public comment. Anybody in the audience want to come up and make any comment for other items not on our agenda today? All right. Any commissioner reports? Okay, we do have executive session scheduled for items one and two. I I'll listen to whatever the board has to say, but number two, Mr. Golden, you have a contract that you want us to approve and a recommendation?
It would be a letter of engagement is what we would get from the attorney. This would be hiring an attorney in order to negotiate the contract manager at risk terms and conditions. The individual that we're looking at, I've discussed with Dick Strasberg. It's the same individual that's being used down in Clay County. He's a attorney out of Colorado. His firm specializes in construction law. The hourly rate is $450 an hour and the estimated work, depending on what the negotiation is, is between $5,000 to $10,000. So he is somebody that is currently doing work in the state. Mr. Strasberg has used him in the past. And so out of the other options, his rate and his estimate was the most competitive. And so we would get a letter of engagement from him if the board, if you want me to go ahead and finish up negotiations with him and make the arrangements.
All right. So are you looking for an emotion, a motion then to approve that?
Yeah, authorization to just negotiate on those terms.
I would so, are you going to have public comment at all?
I would, I would take public comment on it. Is there any public comment on this agenda item? All right. If not, I would consider a motion.
I'll offer a motion to enter in this agreement.
I'll second.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
And then Bill, we do have one other item for executive session.
And then that's a non-action item, correct? It is. It's informational.
So are we anticipating any further action here today? On anything? No? Okay. So I would ask for a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? I've got a motion by Commissioner Ehrens, second by Commissioner Poppins. Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
All right. I consider a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Consider a motion to adjourn.
Well, opportunity for, or do we?
We've done that.
We did that. We did the general one?
I did all that.
Yeah. Oh. Okay. I move to adjourn then.
Thank you. Thank you. Sean?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.